I can see it coming. I'm not, I'm not like naive. He's not gonna let it go. So. You'll see.
Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 16th. First on our agenda marked for discussion this evening is a presentation regarding the Indian Creek Watershed Management Authority. We have Jennifer with us again. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Jennifer Fensel, East Central Iowa Council of, oh.
I'm just gonna introduce you.
Oh, go ahead.
My name is Steve Cooper. I'm the stormwater coordinator in the engineering department. And one of my responsibilities is to make sure that Steve Marion is in compliance with the Clean Water Act. And one of those responsibilities in the Clean Water Act is to have a watershed assessment program. And being members of the Indian Creek Watershed Management Authority significantly satisfies that requirement. And one of the things within that we've been funding for the last three years, five years. These, we have a soil health coordinator that works with, it's actually a Lynn County employee. And they go out to the rural areas and do public education and outreach to make sure that those areas are doing the best they can for stormwater pollution prevention. Because those areas, they're upstream of us. We accept those waters. We receive those waters. So the soil health coordinator does a great job of making sure that rural areas, stormwater runoff is as clean as possible before it gets to us. So it's a big deal for us to kind of have that position. And we are hoping to continue to fund that position along with the grant money that it was eventually there for, initially there for. So Jennifer Fensel is the director of the WMA and with ECOCAG, and now you can talk.
Thank you, Steve. My apologies. I should have let you introduce her.
And he just came and told me that he was doing that. So my apologies.
Thanks, Steve. It's good background for us, too.
Just so excited to be here. Okay, so like Steve said, I am the administrator of the Indian Creek Watershed Management Authority. It's been around since 2012-ish and our plan was completed in 2015. Okay, so yeah, so what you're seeing here is just, again, I've showed this every time, but to put into context, the entire Iowa Cedar River Basin. So as Steve mentioned, all of the ground that drains toward you, it's significant all the way up into Minnesota, in fact. So it just kind of gives you some context of what we're talking about. So we can go to the next one. Right here. So Watershed Management Authorities were authorized to form in response to the 2008 floods. They are meant to be an organization to bring together urban and rural cities and counties and try to, at a watershed scale, make improvements, mainly concerned with flood reduction and water quality. Can go ahead. And we were one of the first six to form in Iowa, and now there are 27. And I believe 28 is in the process of being formed. So it has grown a lot. This is just kind of a representation of where Indian Creek lies within Lynn County. City of Marion is pretty much all in, I think, still the borders of the Indian Creek Watershed. Indian Creek is also at the top of the Lower Cedar Watershed Basin, and they have a WMA, and their plan was recently completed. And so it's kind of a dual membership. You're sort of part of both groups. So we can go ahead. I think I may have covered all of this. So the members are the cities and the counties. ECOCAG has been doing the administrative work, and we did the plan back in 2015. And so for fiscal '22, unfortunately, we made it through most of the year. But in April, Emory Davis, who was our soil health coordinator, took another position with Heartland Co-op. He is still going to be working within the watershed in his role with Heartland. But that means our coordinator position has been open. We thought we had a really good candidate, but he took another position before we can, we could make that offer. So unfortunately, we are still on the hunt for someone. If you know someone who would love to be the soil health coordinator, please let me know. But before Emory left, he did rack up some accomplishments for this fiscal year. We have more acres that are under conservation plans. Basically, what that means, it's a very big deal to the Iowa NRCS. They love to have agricultural land under what they call conservation plans. Because it means somebody has come out and taken a look, taken a look around and said, you know, this would really go well here and here. And so it's just a way of furthering conservation, but making it work for the landowner. We've got more cover crop. I told you last time that the state average is around 3%, and we're sitting at about 12%. And so we're definitely doing well among our peers. There are a couple of more edge-of-field projects, and I'll have a picture of this in a minute. They can, they have been both bioreactors, which is a hole filled with wood chips that takes water from farm fields and tile water and filters it before it goes into our creek. The saturated buffer is more like a, instead of the pipe going all the way to the creek, the pipe is cut and stops and drains through soil for some distance in the, you know, the grass waterway along the creek. So it kind of tends to filter out those nutrients. Actually, the monitored ones that we have are showing between 75 and 90% reduction in nutrients, in nitrogen. So they are working fabulously. They're, they're also, despite COVID and the challenges that it presented for sure, in some, in 2021, Emory did host a couple of field days. So we'll go, yeah, let's go forward. There was a field day on Curt Zingula's property. This is in conservation cover, and there's the rainfall simulator, they call it. And it mimics different land covers on the ground and what a rain shower will do and how much soil particles it'll pick up and take with it. Can you go to the next one? This is just, he had another cover crop day, so we went and visited. Typically, a farmer who is doing that practice will invite others to come and learn. So that was last September. What can you go? And then there was the bioreactor and saturated buffer. This is something that the state and some of the soil and water conservation districts are really seeing a big increase in interest in these edge-of-field or bioreactor and saturated buffer projects. So there was another workshop given. Let's go forward. And this is a sign that was put up. These folks, the Platteners, hosted a couple of different things in this project, but they did a bioreactor here. We'll go ahead to the next one. I think it's a picture of that bioreactor being installed. So it's just like I said, it's a hole with, of a certain dimension with wood chips. And those also have to be a certain dimension. Then we have some, you know, just taking a look at the farmer's ground and whether or not there's a lot of variety of activity and worms and kind of all makes up the soil health. I can't remember what the, okay, sure. So this is kind of an example of strip tilling. So it's less tillage on the ground. You just go in strips. And then go ahead to the next one. And you plant, and as you plant, you, you both fertilize the area where your crop is going to grow. You also plant your cover crop, and it comes up in the rose in between. And I think, yeah. And so what we're doing now is continuing with the Soil Health Partnership that is going to be, continued to be grant-funded through, at this point, through October of 2023. Because we lost our coordinator and we're working on filling that, we're going to ask for an extension and try and carry this forward a little longer. So we're working on that, partnering on, as I said, the Edge of Field Project Partner Co-op is partnering with City of Cedar Rapids to do a lot more edge-of-field projects. And we have also kind of been tangentially helping out with the Creekside Pride and their effort to do the, and I saw the plan, it's, there's some really interesting and hopefully, some of those projects we can get funded in the future. So I believe that's it. Do you have any questions for me? You all support this organization, and we appreciate it. And we just ask for continued support.
Thank you. I see that Grant has a question.
Sure.
You can detect that pretty early, can't you? So when is the next demonstration of any type? Is there anything planned for this fall?
There are things around the state that are planned. In fact, there is something in two weeks that you might be interested in. I can send you information about that. But in terms of field days on actual ground, because Emory's not in the position anymore, we don't have anything planned yet. But I hope to get that done. It's, you know, you want to stay away from the busy times of the year for the farmers. But we'll try and get something put up. But I will send you that because it's at Indian Creek Nature Center, so it's really close. And you might be interested in that.
Okay, thank you. Steve, quick, quick. So the farmers that are involved in these programs, are they doing it because they are just good stewards of the land? Or is there some direct benefit that results from these programs?
I would say both. And even, even more than that, the benefits to them, there is often cost-share money, or in some cases, the project can be mostly paid for. But in addition to that, it also helps with the soil health, and that is a long-term investment in their farm. And so, and you know, it's all voluntary. And they, yep, and they come and ask for the information. And, you know, this, this grant program is only paying for the staff person. It's not helping to pay for any of the projects. And so that is something that I think is really important because it shows that what we really need is technical assistance. We've got the programs out there to do it, and the desire to do it, we just need someone to help them navigate the hoops that they have to go through to get some of those projects paid for.
I can see, you know, a lot of farmers wanting to do that because it's such a valuable natural resource. And obviously, there's a limited amount of land that they're ever going to have. So taking care of it helps them for decades and decades. But I'm sure there's some that just say, yeah, I'm not going to spend the extra money or the extra time.
Yeah, changes hard. So, but I think more and more, field days are really important because they like to learn from each other. It tends to kind of go if, if a farmer does something, then his neighbors kind of get snoopy and wonder, how's that working for you? And they definitely are good about sharing information. The Platteners have been terrific. They also hosted us on the big show on WHO. It's a radio broadcast, and it's kind of really popular with the rural community and farmers, maybe some of you. And we were on the big show in March, and the Platteners hosted us. And so that was really nice. We were able to, it's really amazing. That guy shows up with a microphone and a computer, and you're on a radio program in a machine shed. So it's pretty fun.
I'm glad to see you continue making progress each year.
Getting the word out. Yep. Okay.
So just for council's awareness, there is a future resolution item on this agenda to pay $17,432.90. That's why Jennifer's here to justify that. So if you have any questions about that.
Thanks, Mike. Go ahead, Randy. Do you have something?
I was just gonna kind of echo what you were saying. I'm with Farm Bureau Insurance, and I think I insure every one of those farms you just showed. But one of the things that we take a look at on the agriculture side, if we look at it, you know, in the old days, we used to plow fields. And we don't plow fields anymore. So a lot of these farmers are trying to find ways to retain that water. You know, they're putting down nitrogens, herbicides, a lot of chemicals, and they're trying to retain that on their fields. So this process of putting a crop coverage down and then planting in between the rows, it's all about, you know, the farmers being that good steward because they know that they don't want, you know, the number one concern and issues that the farmers and agriculture have is soil erosion. And so as we have been experiencing more rains in the Midwest here, you know, they're losing a lot of their fields to creeks and rivers that are silting in. So I find this to be fascinating, and I've always been a big, you know, fan of this, just because of my background as well, too. But it's great to see that you're sharing this with the communities and educating people how important that agriculture is. Because some of the larger cities, you know, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind. And we truly, just like Steve said, you know, we are the recipients of the waters as it comes down that watershed. So these are all valuable tools. So I just wanted to, again, echo what you're preaching and say congratulations and thank you for spreading that message. That's really good stuff. Thank you.
We sort of have a reputation in Iowa as having the larger cities that are much more partnering. So go with that.
Have you seen farmers in this area put conservation easements that require cover crops and require sustainable practices on their land?
So some of the interesting things that Emory worked on early on, I suggested that, you know, let's go for the low-hanging fruit and let's ask the publicly owned farmland that's being rented out to, you know, require some of these cover crops and some of these practices. It kind of gets the ball rolling a little bit. And so they, they did do that. And whether or not they put a lasting easement on, I'm not sure.
I was just curious.
But I do know that there's some other organizations like Silt and some others that are working on conservation easements. And it's a really interesting, you know, effort to both preserve farmland from development, but also, you know, the quality of the ground. So.
I worked on some farm sales about a year ago, where before they sold it, they put conservation easements on it to.
Oh, good.
To ensure that it would be, that cover crops would be planted and that the farming practices would be sustainable.
That's wonderful. And it is also the case in the Middle Cedar.
Not in this part of the state.
Yeah, in the Middle Cedar, which isn't too far away, there are a couple of older landowners who, you know, grew up on that land. And before they passed, they wanted to actually, one, put in an amazing wetland complex right near the, what would have been the farmstead where she grew up. And so that's a neat thing, too.
Thanks for all your, good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Got a couple items on page one. Under the consent agenda, which are not marked. Any questions on those? On the next page, anything prior to D2?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, on C1, and I, I warned Terrill, I had some questions about that. As I just looked at this particular item, first, what struck me was the amount of money that we would be authorizing for equipment change out. So that stimulated just a few questions. And Terrill, I think I shared those with you, but I was kind of curious, as part, you know, is part of this, the fact that operating systems are changing or becoming obsolete relative to their security provisioning? And, you know, I'm thinking, I don't even know what these run on, and you'll probably tell me. But, you know, is this the Windows 10, Windows 11 transition? And Windows 11 can only run on certain hardware?
No, actually, this is just an asset replacement. This equipment's approaching five years. And the warranty runs out in January. So we've timed this to be able to get the equipment in. It's about 68 weeks lead time. You know, it's going to take us a few months to get the, get them loaded up and rolled out. We're starting to see, at this last year, we're starting to see, we send them out for warranty for repair, and as fast as we get one back, another one's ready to go out. So they've definitely, they've definitely taken a beating over the years, and it's time to replace them. A lot of the reason the cost is larger is because it's kind of a system. And so it's a combination of the laptop itself, which is a highly ruggedized laptop, fully ruggedized, along with the mobile printers and the mobile routers, which are not cheap either, in the attendance. So that, that whole set of equipment comprises that system that'll last us another five years. And we've got bumper-to-bumper warranty on that for five years. Because we've learned over the years that they do take, they come, they do go in and out of the docks, so they are mobile. So it's worth it for that warranty to be able to get them back in, out and back in again. So.
Okay. And then one of the other questions, I guess, I had is decommissioning of the old units. What, what happens with all of that? What are some of the key time, timeframes and actions that go along with that?
Once we get them out of the cars, then we always wipe, do a data wipe on the hard drive to wipe all our data off. It's like a DoD level wipe, takes several hours. And then with this type of equipment, quite often, we find other local agencies to donate them to. We could sell them on Gov deals via our regular surplus policy. But we found that sometimes we just don't get the money out of Gov deals. Sometimes we do. But we'll evaluate both those, both those options. And I'm sure you kids will make the decision on that.
Okay. All right. Thanks. You hit the high spots that I was thinking about. Thank you.
Thanks, Terrill. Any other questions? Okay, D2. Seth?
Good evening. So back in February, we came to council with plans to do a statue repair without really knowing the exact estimate as far as the repair. It was going to be around $15,000. The invoice for this repair is about $15,050 for it. We do have plans to ship it back. Originally, we were going to have volunteers kind of do a meetup in hauling. But with just the potential liabilities and risk, we're just going to ship it back. To ship it there is around $1,200 to $1,400. It's going to be around the same to ship it back from Mississippi. But I do have a few pictures of the repair process, and I'll have our in-house statue expert, Brent Neber, come up to kind of describe some of the repairs as I kind of point out.
Seth, is the transportation cost part of that?
It is not. No, there'd be a separate cost. So there's going to be, on the last slide, we have, we still have some painting to do, and then obviously to install it. And so this is really just the repair for the statue. As you will see from the pictures.
Okay.
A big difference.
Next slide. So this is just a picture of the March 22nd. And this is when John Ward from Masterworks, he received the statue. And you can see he's tethered up top with the head down below by the feet. And then pictures of the head unattached at this point. Next slide. And then on the left is, are pictures of the head being reattached and re-soldered onto the statue. There was a lot of work that went into this and getting it aligned just right, a lot more than I can explain to you. But it is quite the process. And then the pictures to your right are the completed process and what it looks like today. Actually, those, those pictures just came in this morning. Kind of the same, same look. We've got some repair and strengthening of the base. You can see where the soldier's feet are attached to the, the base portion before and after pictures. And then on the right, these are very hard to see from this distance. But where he's tethered up, yep, right there at the red, there is a scabbard with a bayonet. And that bayonet is broken half. And so on the picture on the right is where he was able to make a mold of what the scabbard would, would be like. And then he attached that to the soldier. So again, the picture on the right is from this morning.
And that scabbard was something that we didn't even know was missing when we sent it down there. It's been gone for many years. So.
Oh, wow.
So the next steps are to ship the statue back to Marion. We are working with a person in Marion to prime and paint the statue. And then another, another vendor to mount the statue to the base here in, in the park. So those are the next steps to come. Questions?
Great. Yeah. Well, first off, it seems like the damage was more extensive besides just the head.
It was.
Being gone or off. So I think this is really great from a historical restoration standpoint. I just want to share, and I think I passed it along after one of the farmers' markets at Tobby that I attended a couple of weeks ago. There was a comment about the location of this statue up in the park relative to its proximity to a couple of electric switch cabinets and the like. And the concern was, both of those, both the statue and its pedestal and those switch cabinets create, they're an obstruction, and also that's, it's kind of an aesthetic detriment for people taking pictures of the statue. And so the, the question was, could it be relocated to an appropriate spot within the park? And I just offer that as a point of information because that was something that was made an inquiry about. Because they, they, the people that commented about this really value the presence of the, of the statue in the, in the park.
Same person talked to me, it sounds like.
And I believe, and I, and I believe as part of the Plaza project, too, we have some of those items to, to look at. And even though the statue is, is one of those items that we plan on keeping in the park, we can definitely look at that as far as if there's an area in the park that it can certainly be relocated to, for, for, obviously, for aesthetics and also just for proper memorial for the Civil War veterans.
Perfect. I just wanted to put a little bit of a spotlight on that, given the feedback that I had received. So thanks.
Anyone else? Do you have more? Oh, okay. Okay. So we just have the resolution to approve the payment of the repair fee. Okay. And that is a final bill. May for the repair, obviously.
That'll be the final repair. As far as to this vendor, yes, it would be the final repair. We'll have other, other items or other invoices as far as regards to installation and painting and things of that nature. So.
And the shipping.
And shipping, yeah.
Okay. Everyone clear on that? Okay. Move on to engineering. There are no items marked under engineering in this section. Any questions on any, any items in particular? Okay. Then community development. Again, there are two items on this section that are marked. Any questions on those? Go ahead, Tom.
Yes, Mara. The, the second item is a resolution setting, a hearing for a comp plan amendment. This is following standard practices. Once they come out of planning commission, with the recommendation, they get placed on the agenda. Understanding there's been some concern about the comp plan and the amendment thereof. If there's a, I just want to let the council know that this is on their first standard practice. If there's a desire to pull this off and do something different with it, then we can do that. Just so the council's aware.
It's F2. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So. Tom, I guess I was a bit remiss not looking back at, at prior memos on this. But is what is represented for this public hearing, is that a lower-density configuration for that development?
It is.
Okay.
It's going from attached to detached.
Okay. So individual residences. Separate. Correct. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. The library item is also not marked. Any questions on that? All right. Then for the next section of the agenda, I'll turn over the meeting to the deputy mayor pro tem.
Okay, very good.
All right. So with that, on page four, any, any questions or comments relative to items prior to E4? Okay. On E4, we have a motion to receive and file the Marion Airport Assessment of Existing Conditions from HDR. Any, any questions or comments regarding that?
I just wanted to give a brief update. The HDR report is.
I just wanted to give a, a brief update. Uh, the HDR report is included in your council packet. Jer, written by Jerry. Um, there will be a couple of emails that were sent to you and they'll be, uh, I believe Rachel sent them to you today. One is from Lux Air that has comments regarding the, um, HDR report. And one from Jet Air that was also sent, um, just in regards to the length of the north-south runway. The Marion Municipal Airport Committee did receive and file this report as well. Um, their motion was to, um, receive and file it subject to further review by the committee. So there may be comments from them at some point that comes to city council, but at this point, they were not ready to present those at that meeting. Just so you're aware that those comments may be coming at a future meeting.
Yes.
Yeah. Question, Mike. So I looked at all of the items sent there, including the letter from Jet Air. Does that have a date on it?
That Jet Air. The copy that I have does not have a date on it.
Okay. And I believe that also came in a packet where all the other letters were dated two thousand and fifteen. So I guess my question is, before we accept that, I would like to know whether that is, uh, this month's date, or whether that is in reference to the subject matter that all of the other letters were, that were dated two thousand and fifteen.
We can reach out to those that we received it from and ask them.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments about? I have, uh, I think a general comment. As I think about this report and its evolution, um, really this is to bring us forward. From that two thousand and fifteen timeframe to refresh our thinking about, about the airport. Considerations from an aviation demand standpoint, as well as then other considerations that are, that are timely for us at this point in time. And so, um, I, I would imagine that this really is just a point in time benchmark. To inform ongoing considerations that we have before us. I, I, I would have to recommend, um, to my colleagues. That, uh, when the, um, airport committees, uh, I see the minutes are published out there, but I don't know that the audio is there. There was some good dialogue, um, with the committee members and specifically the guest, uh, at the committee meeting. Jerry Cyril of HDR, the author of this report, uh, made some commentary, uh, that I think will also be informative. Relative to, um, your consumption of this report. So I just recommend that to my colleagues. Anything else? Are we missing anything, Mr. Waller on this? Okay. All right. Very good. Uh, so I guess that concludes, uh, that item and back to the mayor.
Thank you. All right. Next is under Public Services. B one and B two are not marked. Any questions on those? Right, B three?
Yes, Your Honor. This is the roof repair package for Marion City Hall. It's this rough section right here. That was damaged in the derecho back in August of two thousand and twenty. We've prepared two different bid items. Uh, the first is the replacement of the standing seam steel roof. Right here, that, that will involve the removal of the roof system, insulation and temporary relocation of the council. So engineer's estimate on that is just right around ninety-six thousand dollars. The second bid option that we put together is what they call a single ply overlay. It's a decorative overlay. And that involves going over the existing roof system without any disruption to, uh, to this room. Engineer's estimate on that is, uh, right around sixty thousand dollars. Both include the twenty-year warranty. We'll bid them both out and see how they come back. Uh, bids reduce September sixth and then we'll bring this back to, uh, city council consideration on September eighth. Uh, we scheduled about a hundred working days in here with a hundred dollar, um, per day late charge. Could you go next slide, please? Do we have the picture? No, we didn't include that. That's fine. And so when we come back, we'll, we'll let, we'll let the council know what, what the options are once we get the bids back.
Anyone, any questions? So a hundred working days?
It, we don't think it'll take, if we go with a single ply option, that'll take two weeks. If we go with a standing seam option, um, we think it'll take probably eight weeks to get it repaired. At the most.
Randy?
Oops, I'm sorry. Ryan, do both of those. I know one of them allows us to have no interruptions, uh, with the repair. Does the other one as well? Or can you just comment on that?
So with the standing steel roof replacement, there's going to be interruptions. They do have to make it weather tight. However, that's going to involve basically a tarp. Um, and so with that option, you, you essentially have to remove the entire roof section of the council chambers.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Steve. Now I'll ask my question. So the steel roof replacement, I'm assuming to make it look exactly as it looks now.
Right.
What is a single ply overlay going to look like?
I'll send a picture out to the council. I did include the slides. I don't think they put it on there.
Okay.
It will, from a distance, it will look just like this. Uh, there'll be a, like a standing seam on the single ply. It'll be a, a single ply vinyl overlay roofing system. Probably the closest one, uh, around here is Bowman Wood School. That's what they did. But I'll send pictures out to the city council. That way you have an idea of what the aesthetics are.
So you're still going to have the ribbed look?
You're going to have the ribbed look.
So is this a transparent overlay?
No, it will be a color.
It'll be a color overlay.
Yeah, it'll be a color overlay. They'll go over the standing seam roof system and then you'll have ribs to mimic what's on there now.
Okay.
Go ahead, Cole.
Okay. So I feel like this is the obvious question. It's quite a bit more, less money based on your estimate. What would be the sort of the replacement? What's the benefit to a replacement versus the overlay?
So some people feel that when you put, uh, roofing system over another, another roofing system, you could run into problems. With a warranty, you probably will not. The one thing I will caution is that the construction market, the materials market right now is in flux. So we could be surprised by these numbers. They updated these about as, as recent and as close as they can get them. We could be surprised by the bids when they come back. So we, we really want to see how the bids come back. And then we can get more information to the council and make a recommendation.
So you bid both of them out, both options?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah. So i- i- in that process of bidding them out, I think a, a question, at least in my mind is, is there a material difference between one or the other relative to, uh, projected lifespan? Resiliency to weather and also resiliency to specifically, uh, uh, wind damage. And that would bias us one way or another, besides just the costing.
Not really. I will say that we both have the same warranty. One thing I will say about the single ply overlay, it's much easier to repair. And so this is the same option that we went with at the public service existing facility. We're seeing, uh, many, many institutions starting to adapt this. So, uh, same warranty, uh, easier to repair with a single ply. When you start working with standing seam roofs, they can be tricky to, to repair.
Okay.
Sarah wants to change the, do the overlays so she can change the color to pink.
We're having a conversation, but, but only because you brought up Bowman Woods, because I trust a lot, whatever you're, you know, talking about with this. But you say that's what they have at Bowman Woods and I live not far from there and that roof is like under construction every three years. I swear. And maybe that's not the reason, but is that, it seems like they're constantly doing something to that roof. So when you say that, it triggers in my head. Is that a good option based on that?
So not that section. There's many sections of that roof line because it's been added to a couple of times. I'll send out the pictures and the information on it. That way you can, you can look at it. And so if you go to the, the entrance of Bowman Woods, I think to the west, you'll see a white roof system that's been there for quite some time.
Okay. Any other questions?
Your Honor. Go ahead. Just to follow up, uh, Sarah, if you're really going to want to go for kind of multi-color scheme on that. I'm, I prefer that gold and cardinal, uh, scheme.
Can, can I object? Thank you.
Okay. So I think, any other questions? Are we all clear on that? All right. Public hearing, uh, let's be for, is that you also?
Yes, yes, sir.
Brian?
Okay. This is the, uh, public hearing for the foundation repair package associated with the new public services facility. We solicited bids. We got two bidders back. Uh, Western Specialties was the lowest bid. They were over the engineer's estimate of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, their bid came in at three hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, Western Specialties is a very large contractor. They're, they have twenty-seven offices throughout the country in the larger cities. This is what they do. They come in and, uh, we make these repair to foundation systems. That's all they do. So, uh, staff is recommending awarding the bid to Western Specialties. We did include a contingency bid. Uh, there's stuff that we cannot see, uh, below the surface. Uh, they will repair that. So we did include that. However, uh, our structural engineer is pretty confident that they think they've got everything within the spit scope. They are scheduled to complete all repairs by December second this year, two thousand and twenty-two. So we are recommending approval moving forward with it.
Okay. Questions? All right. We're on to engineering, E one. Mike?
Your Honor, so these E one through E four, all the same topic. So in your packet, there is the original request that came from the Marion Independent School District regarding the one-way request for Fourth Avenue and Thirteenth Street. There is the safe routes to school plan of just the portion that talks about this area. Where it refers to having it timed one way. It is not recommended to do a time, but do it twenty-four seven, just because with early dismissals or late starts, that school day could vary quite a bit. And it's much easier to leave it standard rather than change it continuously and to put those signs up and down, if that's the way the city council goes. So what's shown on the screen here, you can see the blue boxes. That's actually the property that's owned by Marion Independent School District. So you can see that Wesley portion of Fourth Avenue is actually, even though it's a street, is actually, has been vacated and dedicated to the school. Just looked it up for Mr. Jensen and it was in two thousand and ten that that occurred. So some time ago, um, that they have had that. And you can tell there's the parking on the south side of Fourth Avenue. And that was the reason. We would not allow them to do that on a public street. To have that parking right off the street. If they, uh, owned all the parcels on the east side of that, they probably would have vacated it and got that portion as well. But because there's still a few parcels over on that side, not all Fourth Avenue was vacated and donated or sold. We have gotten some comments from three, 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 uh, Thirteenth Street. That would be the, the parcel just north of Third Avenue on the east side from both the renters. And the, um, owners of that building that do not like Thirteenth Street becoming a one-way. They do have some disabilities and a lot of doctor's appointments. So they're worried that if the, if that becomes a one-way southbound, that they won't be able to get out and get to their doctor's appointments. I would say that there shouldn't have any problem getting out. It might be the problem of coming back in when the kids are getting picked up or dropped off. But that's their comments and we will provide those on Thursday as part of the public comment period. So we'll start on Thursday with a public comment periods that those, um, can, um, provide comment for against. Just like a public hearing, it's just a public comments out of a public hearing. It's not put in the newspaper. It was mailed directly to the, the property owners that are adjacent. You have the tack to receive and file. And then there's two resolutions. One is to make Fourth Avenue a one-way. And one is to make Thirteenth Street a one-way. So you can approve both, neither one or the other. And that's all of the city council based on the tack recommendation. So I'd open it up for any comment that you have tonight. And maybe after the, the comments that you get Thursday, you'll have additional questions. But that's where we're at on this request.
Okay, questions? Oh, go ahead, Steve.
Just an observation. I think I'm correct because I, right before I came to the meeting today, uh, again, I've driven those streets a number of times, picking up grandkids. So I think I'm, I'm correct on Fourteenth Street between, uh, Third and Fifth Avenue. That that is no parking on the west side. Does that sound correct to you, Mike?
Based on the pictures, I can see it looks like there's parking on the east side. So.
On the east side, not the west. Yeah.
Yeah. So I would have to go verify that, but.
Yeah, that'll become essential because there's times where I've leapt and gone east on Fourth. And then try to turn north on Fourteenth. And in the wintertime, that is, because there's cars coming down, cars parked on the east side. And there's cars fully loaded on the west side of that too. And in the wintertime, getting three cars through there gets to be pretty, pretty dicey. So I think that, as I look at this, I understand why they're requesting it. That becomes one of my concerns. Is just how tight Fourteenth Street becomes on trying to get more cars through there. And I'm assuming, I don't know what their plan is. Can we get some comments from the, the school on how they're going to handle Fourth Avenue? If they, if this is one way, then is that going to be just, that'll be two lanes?
That's the intent.
That's their intent?
Yep.
And so a drop-off, pick-up time, that'll be two lanes that can be formed, dropped off all the way back from Thirteenth to Fourteenth?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's why we don't like the movement of northbound on Thirteenth, because then you have someone trying to cut in when we're trying to drop kids off. And that's why we're recommending both as one ways.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think it, yeah, because then Fourteenth is an absolutely critical street because that becomes the conduit for everything going in on, on Fourth. So, okay, thanks.
Okay. Other questions? Take care of all your items, Mike?
Yes, yes, sir. They're all.
All right. Community development. Any, I assume no questions on the first one, but are there any questions, F one? All right, F two.
So F two, um, this is the public hearing that, uh, I think was continued at the last meeting. And then, uh, the additional items on the agenda, the ones that were tabled, we placed them on there. Um, you know, I, I left the day after the meeting. And returned this morning at about eleven o'clock. So I haven't had time. I know there was conversation at the last council meeting regarding wanting to understand a little bit more about the comp plan. Um, I've got a couple of slides. I can talk to those issues, but certainly if the council wants to not have these on the agenda for Thursday, that's certainly your prerogative. So, um, we just place them on because typically if something gets tabled, we place it on the next agenda to have it removed from the table if there's a consideration. But we can delay that if that's a, a desire of the council. I did put a couple of slides in that kind of walked through the, the comp plan. You know, I can proceed or not. Does that sound good? Sure. So, so the city's kind, I think there were some, uh, questions about the city's comprehensive plan, um, the future land use, uh, map amendments. We usually, we refer them back to the city's comprehensive plan. The conference plan is the guidance, the, um, provided, to the council from community input that really is, is, as, as it said, the land use plan intended to be a general guide to growth and development. Within Marion is not a development plan originate financial recommendation. So, um, if you take a look at the, the document, it's got a number of policy recommendations, goals and, and, and establishment. Is basically intense for each of the land use categories from residential, commercial, industrial, uh, uptown. And the document just kind of lays out policies and such. So this is the document that we use as a reference to, um, you know, what, what, how to proceed with a, uh, a request to amend the comp plan. So we evaluated against it. And, you know, go to the next slide. And I just wanted to point out that, you know, there's a couple of places in here where they do talk about residential development and, and certainly, um, you know, when we're reviewing it, not being a hard and fast document, we take a look at it and just kind of say, hey, when we look at this area, is it similar and like compatible uses? And that's kind of how we, uh, um, search our recommendations. And proceed to the planning commission with that. So as an example, the, directly out of the comp plan is while growth areas will likely be predominantly comprised of single family residential uses. They should also contain other types of land uses, including schools and commercial centers. So there's a lot of, obviously that could be very, that could be interpreted a multitude of ways. So I just wanted to provide a little, you know, background on what we do and how we look at it from a comprehensive planning perspective. And did you want to say something, Ryan?
Yes, thank you.
Can we go to the next slide, Terrell? I think this is an important thing when you factor in, and, and should say that staff is still planning on doing a comp plan or comp plan 101 for, in September, as we had communicated to council. So this was just meant specifically for, as it relates to this development, this proposal coming in. But as Tom mentioned, the, the land use plan or the comp plan is, and this is, the, the previous slide had the language that was taken directly from the comp plan, that it's not a development plan of rigid and finite recommendations. So it is a very high-level document that is subject to council's consideration based on what's around, what the community vision is, obviously, things, it needs to be a fluid document, things do change, development patterns do change, trends do change. So it gives the community the flexibility to make adjustments and contemplate and consider other proposals that would come through. This slide was important for us as staff to, to share with council, because what's highlighted red, I don't have the pointer, so if somebody across the room that, that has the power in their hand can the, the area that's highlighted in red is the subject property. And so when, when you look at the, the comp plan and the future land use that it contemplates, it's the detached, single-family. And when you look at, you have Tower Terrace Extension going along the north, and then you have the school district surrounding it, and then there's, the wording's not the greatest, it's, it's in white, but business community zoning, business community local zoning on either side of Tower Terrace. So different type of use, so those are not necessarily compatible with residential. So when you, when, when the staff's looking at it and considering it, they're going to identify, well, those are more intense uses, and so you'd like to have something that's, that serves as more of a buffer to a, a single-family. So hence the, the proposal for the attached units, those are typically more high, high-dense, more lighting, you think about the sound, the traffic, things like that, which is more similar to other types of uses like, like a restaurant or the commercial, the business-type land use. So when the staff is evaluating something like that compared, against the comp plan, they're looking at, okay, what does the comp plan say, it says future land use is residential, and then within the residential, there's different categories, there's attached, single-family. There's different types of zoning classifications, and how well does that fit, and then does it serve that transition, does it help buffer single-family? Basic planning concepts, you don't necessarily want to have single-family next to uses that are going to generate a lot of light, traffic activity, because then what happens is the people that are living there in the single-family are saying, hey, look, our, our, our peace and quiet is being disrupted by this. So when, when we're processing this, we're, we're looking at that as well. And certainly if there was, if there was anything major, we'd call that out. So if it's, a lot of times our, a lot of times comp plans will identify what's considered a minor amendment, what's considered a major amendment, in talking with staff, and looking at Tom and Dave for, to make sure I'm not misstating this, but our, our current comp plan, which was 2009, 2010-ish, 11, doesn't break out what constitutes a major or minor amendment. We do have funding in the budget for an update to the comp plan, that is something that we've talked about. We want to, the plan is to proceed with that after our housing analysis, which should be wrapping up sometime this month, but that would be important to help inform the process for the comp plan update. I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, but there is a, a lot, much a larger process to make sure that the community vision is updated, is reflective. So when we as staff are going through and working with petitioners on what is the, the, the future look like, what should it be? We have a high reliance that it's been vetted by the community, there's been community input, and that the future land use is really truly reflective of current trends, current needs, and current community desires. But we, we did want to show, provide a little bit from, of the language from the comp plan as it relates to, it's not a finite document, it is meant to be, provide some guidepost. But that there is a, a layer of analysis that goes in when looking at what's the use and what's the intensity as it relates to what's surrounding it as well. As it relates to the, the, the comp plan, the comp plan amendment, this is something what would be, would be considered a legislative decision. Where the council has the ability to say, no, because we just don't like it. It doesn't fit our vision, what we think the vision is. When you get into more of the standards and making a decision based on standards and various criteria, that's when you get into the zoning. So as we've talked about this as a staff, if, if there is, there are aspects that the, the council does not like, does not feel that it fits within the vision of the community, there are options, the options are to, to reject it, to deny it. You have the option to send it back to planning and zoning if there are aspects of the, the land use, the, the proposal that you don't like. Because it is legislative, and they're asking for an amendment, you can send it back to the planning and zoning saying, hey, Planning and Zoning Commission, take a look at these various aspects, these are things that we don't like, that necessarily, we don't think really jive with, where we think that the community should be going. Or the, the, there is the ability to approve it as, as submitted. We did look back at the, the vote, the votes for coming out of planning and zoning, which is, as you all know, is, is the body that helps vet some of these things before it comes to council. And it appears, again, Tom and, and, and Dave, correct me if I'm misspeaking, but appears that the dissenting vote was really tied to the existence of that single-family structure. And in, in, in talking with some of you after the meeting, that also was a sticking point too, so. Just providing information, we know council does want a, a, a full-on overview of a comp plan, what it is, it, how does it work? What are your options with, within it? But we did want to provide a little bit more of kind of a, a Cliff Notes version as it relates to this development. So that when we go into Thursday, that there's, there, there's at least a additional information that you had requested, and we're being responsive to that. So happy to answer questions, fill in the blanks where we, where we may have left some. I don't know, Tom, if you have anything else, or Dave?
Go ahead, Sarah.
This stretch, this stretch is beyond where we're, the specific area we're looking at, but it's reflective of, like, why I'm asking the question, so. I come back to this on a couple of things, one, I, I agree with the dissenting vote on planning and zoning. I don't understand why there's just the one house and then a bunch of attached, I wish there was a little better diversity with that, if it really is kind of a buffer, I, it would be nice to see that. But my question is, is how are we looking at Tower Terrace Road right now? I mean, to me, and, and I, I'll go back to my history and, and other responsibilities I had professionally, where I wasn't responsible for the Tower Terrace Road extension for the different communities. And it was always looked at to be an arterial. You know, it's 380 to 13. The ability to make it as many lanes, it's kind of the wideness of it now, even though it's only one lane each direction, but what that's going to look like is a commercial zone. So I get where these could be a great buffer between them and the homes. I worry a little bit that things are getting away from us, because we already have attached up in the corner from there. I worry if, you know, are people going to say, well, we couldn't find anybody to build a home here, or we couldn't find anything here, we're going to put homes there, and then they, pretty soon we need to do something with this road, and people are like, what do you mean, you want to do something with this road? You know, my house is right up against it, and I, I don't want to see that now, I don't want to see commercial next to it, because housing's going in first, and suddenly we've lost that.
We have that on the other side, and we've experienced that on, on the other side of Tower Terrace, where there's no buffer at all.
Right, it's right up against it. And so it, I guess where this can be a buffer, but I guess it's also opening up, I'm really looking at it, and then we're looking at as we the density of the number of attached that we have in that area north of Tower Terrace, which there's quite a few in that neighborhood, kind of like green and off, but then as you extend out, and as we look to how we take that out to Highway 13, what is our vision that that's commercial? I guess we're, I feel like we're putting houses in, and we're putting commercial in after it, and it causes some tensions instead of maybe the other way, maybe that's wrong.
So, so I, I, that, you are absolutely correct. And 15 years ago, it was the opposite, the commercial folks would kind of go out, and then you'd see it kind of filling around it. That's why it's very important to preserve the commercial corridors, we've lost some in the past. And there was a long time in Marion's history, and Dave can attest to this as well, where like, when we first started here, there wasn't commercial zoning north of 10th Avenue, Steve if you were on Planning Commission back then, it was very, very, very difficult to get commercial zoning in the community. What we did with this comp plan is, is we did specifically outline nodes of commercial. We've, we've stretched those a little bit in certain areas, Tower Terrace Road between 10th and, and Albernets. The one, the northwest node, the northeast node is the neighborhood in Indian Creek, which is very specific and has commercial mixed use, and we got a very locked-down planned development for that, for that area. But the in-between areas, it was not identified to, to kind of make it a commercial corridor. And maybe that's a different perspective from, from this council to the one that was developing the comp plan. But that's, that was the idea when the comp plan was, was put together, was there'd be commercial nodes, which were like neighborhood commercial areas to accommodate the surrounding development. This area was not identified for commercial, and it was not projected to be that. I think this would be a very difficult place for commercial, just my, from my perspective. The road's going to be elevated quite a bit. So that, that, what's that? And yeah, and there's very limited access, which I think you've seen, and we talked about it, that, as we related to the plat. So, so while the comp plan is old, we did, we did take into consideration that specific concern, and that is that commercial areas would be the Tower Terrace and Albernets, and then the Tower Terrace and 35th corridor. So.
Yeah, Tom, or, or maybe Mike, I, I'm just looking at the geography here of this property on, on Google Maps, and between that area where we will ultimately have to build a bridge to connect the two sections of Tower Terrace, isn't that predominantly floodplain to the north of the property we're talking about now?
Yeah, and if you look at the preliminary plat, it actually has the floodplain delineated on it, so you can see exactly where it's at. But Tower Terrace, actually, between Old Winslow and New Winslow, will have no access. So we have an access management plan, and so there will be no access allowed on Tower Terrace.
Okay. Well, I guess, I guess that just, again, augments that whole notion that, given the floodplain and, and everything else, there's just not going to be anything developing along that little new section of Tower Terrace. So I, I think I heard, Ryan, I think I heard you say that this comprehensive plan was written in about 2010-ish?
Yeah, 2010.
Okay.
Approved, 2010.
So my question is, we're, we're hotly awaiting the housing study. Will the data, in terms of projected need, will that, will that study help inform this specific decision about this parcel to be developed?
I mean, it's going to, it's going to give us an indication of where the need is for housing. In overview, it's not going to get into the specificity of a location. So it may say we're, we're, you know, we're got a great deal of need for condominiums or two-unit hatch, it may talk about the affordability factor, smaller lots, bigger lots, but it's not going to say specifically where, we'll get, we'll not get into any kind of a location conversation. But it could say that you have too many duplexes, and it should be single-family, or you have, I, I can tell you what, I have a pretty strong feeling, I was going to say we need more multifamily just from affordability factor, but, yeah. So we'll get that data, it's going to take the inventory we have, and it also looks at regional data. And they talked to realtors to get an idea. It's the same company that used, that Cedar Rapids used, our market isn't big enough that it's going to be something substantially different than the Cedar Rapids market, just by virtue of the size of our area and the, in the data constraints.
So from a timing perspective, we expect to get that report yet this month, and then that could cue us up to have a discussion then about this particular piece of property relative to the existing comp plan, is that?
I'm, I'm expecting you to get a draft, I don't know that it'll be final, I haven't received a draft yet, but should get a, a draft this month.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
So a quick clarification, Mike, on Winslow Road, both on the north and the south side of Tower Terrace there, are either one or both of those going to be gone once Tower Terrace is connected through?
So the westerly Winslow, the new Winslow Road will stay there. There is an access point to the south of Tower Terrace, that'll be to access that, what, what it says, business local zoning. So whether that's a, a quick star or something that goes in there.
Right.
On the east side.
I'm talking about the east, east.
Yeah, so the east side, the old Winslow Road, the section north will actually go away eventually, once we build that bridge.
Okay.
Once Tower Terrace Bridge is built, then that old wood bridge north of Tower Terrace will go away.
Okay.
The old section of Winslow Road between Tower Terrace and Indian Creek Road, there is a plan for how that area gets reconfigured to tie some of those streets in there, and, and how that all works in the future, and I can share that plan if, if you don't recall what that looks like.
But that's going to, that intersection with Winslow Road there, heading north to Tower Terrace, that intersection is going to stay there?
So the easterly Winslow and Tower Terrace will be there as a, a three-way, so it'll be
Three-way.
Basically a T-intersection, so it'll be south, and it'll be east and west, but it will not go north.
Okay, okay, thanks.
If, if I can, just, just one more, I think it's important to note that the community business zoning that's north of Tower Terrace and, and, and west of Winslow and east of or east of Winslow, there's old and new Winslow in the middle, so you can see it, it's directly above where the bridge will go, it's this business community. So that area is owned, that was one of the sites proposed by the YMCA at one point. So that has a zoning that does support limited commercial mixed use and apartments, so that, that area will likely develop with a more intense use than a single-family use. Just, just, I just want the council to be aware of, of that situation that currently exists. And as well up on the top of the, there's a little piece just at the T-intersection of the newer Winslow and Tower Terrace, where's this pointer, I'm going to give it, I'm going to give it a whirl. Last time it was a bad, bad episode, so. So right here, there's about a, a couple acre piece that is owned community business as well. So you got community business here, and this community business here, and then, but there is a significant change in grade, as I was saying earlier. So this is kind of up on the, up on the hill, there'll be floodplain, the bridge will come over, tie-in, this will be the T-intersection. The city owns the property here, that where the little notch out is, and then we, the city also owns all this property here, just for knowledge. One other point, I, I think it's important to note, Sarah had asked about the house, so that, that, and then maybe I wasn't clear, just for clarity. So the developer bought the entire parcel, including the house. And so that, that's included in the preliminary plat, so he's, he's, he owns it, he'll redo it, he's intending to sell it as a, as a part of the development. And so the concern with the buffering that he pointed out, the planning commission was like, hey, I'm, I'm going to sell that house based on the development as a whole, so anybody So anybody buying it will know the situation that exists. So I, I didn't know if that was clarity needed on that, but so. And if you look at the, there's a, a plat, the preliminary plat's been developed. Uh, it's not on the agenda, that'll be a future agenda item. Um, the plat only moves forward after the zoning is in place to allow for the plat to be uh approved. Uh, you can see where they've done the out, or there's a lot where that house sits on, so.
Your Honor, there was, actually. So did, was there a decision for us to leave these on the agenda or take them off until we're ready to act on, on them? Was that?
That is, that's a decision point for the council. If you want to take it off the, off the table, it will be on the agenda for you to do that. If you, if you prefer to wait and continue the table, I mean, it's, it's tabled, so we'll continue to keep it on the agenda uh until such time that the council feels comfortable to, to make that uh make a determination, one way or the other.
So then on Thursday, they would have to be
There would have to be a motion to take it off the table in order to um consider that. The, the public hearing was continued, so the public hearing is, is still open. So you will have to handle that process as well.
Logistically. Oh, it's a motion to remove from the table, so that would be denied. If people didn't want to remove from the table, then you would just put it down?
Correct.
Or you could vote for it and then bring it up for consideration?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, clear?
This helpful for the council, even, even the brief conversation? We do plan on doing a more um comprehensive overview.
I thought, I thought it was very helpful, and I think a lot of, or at least a lot of the questions I'm gonna have moving forward is, I understand that we need buffers, but I, I don't think that condos are the answer to those buffers. Um, I was in West Des Moines Johnson County, or Johnston over in that area, and these developments, they have really put a lot of thought and time into some of these major corridors, and I think we're missing the boat on, you know, some of this commercial property tax base that could be, could be putting through there. This is our material that allows us to capture not only those tax dollars, but also retail tax dollars at the register. So point of sales when we're dealing with um local option sales tax and things of that nature, uh, we're missing the boat on that. Um, this is a great opportunity. I've had a lot of people ask when we're gonna start putting gas stations and some of those other amenities out into those areas there. Um, they do have to travel a great distance just to get the gallon of milk anymore. So I think we're losing focus on that. In my perspective, just like what Sarah brought up, it's, it's which ones leading. Again, we're slowly getting back into what's leading um the growth of our community. And, you know, though I see that we have these business community zonings out there, um, it'd be nice to see some of these backfills coming in, so we could actually see that pulled up rather than responding to um, you know, these things, you know. Unfortunately, this one was a, correct me if I'm wrong, time the land has been purchased already, and understanding that it is zoned to go from agriculture to detached. Am I incorrect on that?
I, I don't know if it's been purchased, um, I have no idea. Like, I'm, I'm assuming it's under contract. I don't know if they've done an outright purchase or not.
I think what Randy is saying is that they understand that this, that was the, the comprehensive plan.
Correct.
I mean, it's not like it's a surprise.
Correct, yeah, but to go back to your, your question, um, Ryan, yes, that was very helpful. I think it kind of brings us all back into that perspective again. I know we're looking at, we're looking at a thimble of the big picture here. It, it would be easier to go back and unwind this, and I appreciate these comments of saying, you know, in two thousand and ten, it was a different council. Our city looked totally different by population, by geographic territory uh twelve years ago. So uh it, I, I would personally like to see that whole build out all the way from our city limits, all the way to Highway thirteen on that Tower Terrace, throughout that area, and I know that's getting off topic to this particular item here, but uh, we're, we're, we're at it. We're, we, we keep saying we're, we're getting to the point where our growth is putting us, we're here. Um, we need to be making these final decisions and as a city, kind of helping our developers understand what our vision is. It's a whole different council up here, and what are, this is not the vision of that previous council. Um, no right or wrong to that, it's just uh, it, it's just that growth. We got one shot at this, one shot at it, so. Um, but thank you, yes, that was very helpful.
Thanks, Randy. Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I, I think Randy's comment about the vision of, of what was there back in two thousand and ten, you gotta say, all right, where are we at today? And one of the things I'm gonna do is, is I, I'm sure I've done it a few, several times, but never, I've just been driving it, but I'm gonna start with, uh, on Tower Terrace from Thirty-Fifth Street and drive that west from the perspective of what is the vision that we should be having today for the rest of Tower Terrace going west? And so to, to Randy's point, when I come to this area, I'm gonna be having this perspective and vision starting from Thirty-Fifth Street, and I know we're pretty heavily loaded with condos on that east side of Tower Terrace towards Thirty-Fifth Street. And so I want to take that drive and say, what's the vision that we want everybody to see ten, fifteen, twenty years from now? So I think that's one perspective is I'm gonna take a look at as, as we, as I look at this on Thursday.
Anything else? Okay, everyone clear on this one? All right, now we're on to the, I think that takes care of F-six through F-six, right, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we're on to the other department discussions. The first one is the discussion and direction regarding establishment of an airport visioning subcommittee. Who's got this one?
Take that, sorry. I was flipping.
By default?
Yeah, no, I was, I'm sorry, I was turning the page and flipping my, my, my screen here on the computer. Um, so this is, um, I, I communicated an email to council, um, and we've, we've included this in, in focus that the city council has an airport subcommittee that we've been working on um, the, the long-term vision of the Marion Airport. Um, the item on uh the agenda, the receiving file, that was part of this process. And uh the, the, the discussion with the, the council subcommittee on the airport was, we need to make sure that we have an engaged process as we're evaluating that, that community asset. Uh, because right now, it's, it's um multiple parcels held, uh, the runway is held by the, by the city. Um, the other parcels are held by private entity. And uh, and as part of that, we've been trying to educate ourselves. We've toured um Iowa City Airport. We're gonna be setting up a, a meeting with a couple others that Jerry Searle has recommended, so we can inform ourself on operations. What does it look like? What do we need to do? What are some things we need to be thinking about? So that when we're visioning this long-term, it's a comprehensive uh approach. And so as part of that, just making sure it's an engaged process with other stakeholders in the community. And so what we wanted to bring forward to the council, and this is a recommendation coming from the airport subcommittee along with staff, is um to, to discuss and, and really receive direction on establishing a, an airport visioning subcommittee, an ad, ad act committee that, that the council would appoint that we can work with um as we go through and look at um the ALP, the long-term vision, um to help really help serve as a resource for the council and staff as we're going through and making sure that we're getting input from the business community, from uh representatives, from the uh, the, the community's airport uh committee um and just other stakeholders that would provide insight into what does an airport look like? Um, what are some things we should be thinking about as we uh get further along in the conversations with um our partners at Lux Air on, on the long-term future of this? In, in the packet, I believe that there is a section on their side in front of you. Um, this is what we've identified as um a concept that we'd like to throw out and, and, and talk through with you all, uh, and get your, your, your feedback and, and hopeful direction on moving forward. Six members could be seven. Um, do you think seven's probably a good number? Two members from council, um, two members from the airport committee, um, a representative from uh Medco, um, probably somebody from Collins Aerospace. And, and we don't want to um box anybody into a corner. Um, Collins Aerospace is, I mean, it's a huge uh resource here in our region. There's, so there's a natural fit with the visioning of an airport. So these are just ideas and concepts that we wanted to present to you, but by no means we didn't want to box any entity in, in saying you have to be there, but this is kind of what we're thinking, um, and we wanted to present it to you. I think I've said enough. If anybody from the airport subcommittee or other members of staff, uh, Mike or Tom, uh, wanna chime in and, and provide anything that I left out, please feel free.
Yeah. Well, just, just to augment uh your commentary, Ryan, um, I think, you know, having a group like this um who is kind of the consistent backbone to our considerations, you know, uh, over the last couple of days, I've been thinking a bit about this, and I think maybe this, this group as defined, uh, a- as you've defined, is kind of a core team. There may be issues or considerations that we identify that need some special treatment. And so as, as we go forward over the next several months, we might then um, you know, augment this group with, with select people to help us think about a particular issue, and that, that would be a transient, time-limited involvement. But what it does is, is it, it allows us really to expand the stakeholder footprint for the considerations that we make over time. So uh kind of this being the core team and, and then um a- as nee- as needed as our questions uh drive us to it, to engage others, to uh work with the core team.
Who else? Go ahead.
Sure, I just have a couple of questions. Um, first is, so I, if I understand, we've got the, um, let me just make sure we've got airport subcommittee, we've got the municipal airport committee, and we're recommending now a visioning committee. Is that, is that all, is that accurate? So I think getting a sense about sort of objectives of each one of those groups would be helpful. And then um regarding membership of this committee, I wonder if there's, you know, an opportunity to think about um resident voices here and/or some of our more um specific uh companies here in Marion. So I see Collins on there, right, they're a large employer here in the community. But, you know, how will we gather the voice of actually the folks that are working and um, you know, their businesses here in Marion? So just a couple of things, I think, to get some more information would be helpful.
Sure. So the Marion Municipal Airport Committee is established by code, and so they will, they handle, uh, they're mostly pilots. They handle a lot of the items that come through um that require action um for the current airport, so current operation. So when we were, uh, as an example, when we were applying for the state grant, work with them, um, have them evaluated, they um provide input, give us the recommendation. We brought it forward to council. So they serve as more of an advisory uh commission to the council. Um, the airport subcommittee, as I understand it, this was established prior to my arrival, but it's um three members of council, um, Councilman Harper, Jensen, Instranet, and that was helped to, to help. Um, and please fill in if I'm misunderstanding or misrepresenting. Um, but as um some of the discussions with the FBO lease was happening um in the transition period between city managers, that group was helpful to kind of bridge that gap and keep conversations going. And then it has turned into um what, you know, how, now that we've gone past that, how, what do we do to um further evaluate long-term? Let's educate ourselves. Um, and that's where um as part of those conversations that we need to be engaging other stakeholders, and it's gotta be a diverse group. It can't just be all pilots. We do need to have that voice from the business community. So the business community voice, uh, when we talked about it, that's where we felt Medco would help be a good representative of uh the industrial park um and so, and be the liaison, because a lot of the industries are on the Medco board. So is there a way we can have that, that voice without overloading and having too many chefs in the kitchen, if you will? Um, a- a- as far as a residential, a resident voice, absolutely. I mean, that's part of the feedback that we're looking for, so. I think I answered all the questions.
So we still have the subcommittee and the visioning group working simultaneous, simultaneously. Is that accurate? Both of those will, right, is that what I'm hearing you suggest? Or are you suggesting that this subcommittee would not continue to operate?
Uh, the, the subcommittee has been very helpful for our staff in, in terms of um much like the, the other subcommittee, when we have matters that kind of serve as a sounding board. As, I mean, we as staff and the, the subcommittee haven't got into when do we start phasing that out? Um, I, I just with the makeup of it, um, in my mind, when we were going back and forth, it was that the council representation of two would, would start, we'd start to phase it out, but we haven't really talked about that.
Yeah.
I, go ahead. I, I was just gonna say, Colette, maybe to answer part of your question of, you know, what, what's unique about this versus the others? In my mind's eye, the, the, the airport committee that has existed, the municipal airport committee, really is more aviation technical-related consultation, uh, certainly centered from a, from a pilot's viewpoint. But in comparison and contrast, this group I view as, if, if we were to rewind time, go back to, say, twenty-fourteen or early twenty-fifteen, a group like this, had it existed, would have informed and painted um a more, I'll say, community robust picture as to the activities that went on back, way back in twenty-fifteen relative to um the airport being acquired privately, as well as a portion of it by us. So I think this serves a need that has existed for a long time, is to really give us, you know, what is it from a, from an operational, clearly, but business and, and direction? Where do we want to take this in terms of developing a community asset? Or wha- what do we want to do with it? And, and that, no other group serves that function. So this is unique, and this would be, I think this would be time-limited, starting now, and then at probably a defined future date of, you know, nominally a year out would cease to exist, because it will have helped inform enhancements to our governance structure and everything else. So that's kind of the view that I have for this particular group.
Go ahead, Randy.
Thank you. Um, as we're learning, um, going through a lot of these, I'll, I'll just kind of come back and circle around to the subcommittee in my years, um, as being part of the city's overall departments, and looking at this has been a huge uh structure to the airport, because it really allows us to kind of put our arms wrapped around this, try to figure out where we're at and what we're going to do moving forward with it. And as we see a lot of the airports, they're all being operated a little bit differently, uh, whether they're like a city department, or if they've been um subbed out or uh under contract with an FBO operator, they're all just a little bit unique. And, and we'd kind of talked a little bit about this, and I'll just kind of use it as an example, the way our library is actually run. Um, it's got its own entities that work internally. I don't see, if, if we could fast forward going into the future, I think I know where maybe your questions are coming from, is the subcommittee is not a permanent committee that would be needed forever. It's just for us to get a handle on what we're gonna do with this airport. This group that we're looking for, in all of the airports that we've been touring and understanding, the revenue source has to come from somewhere. And if we can get these other entities involved with it, that is, that is kind of our, our teeth into this and understanding who the stakeholders are and who could be utilizing this. As we've toured the airport down in Iowa City, um, I'll, I'll circle back around this again. The first thing I seen when I rolled down to the, the I'll I'll circle back around this again. The first thing I seen when I rolled down to the the. The airport property down there were ambulances. They were transporting in medical devices and things of that nature. And if we could just tap into some other resources where we could be bringing those types of things in and transporting and using that as a corridor. That helps us in the revenue stream that it would actually take us. To run an actual airport through a budget through the process. So I guess in my eyes, I'm looking at. The current committee that what we have, those are the day to day operation, things that we're looking at. The subcommittee that we have, we're trying to get a handle on where we're at. This is, these are the ones that are kind of studying this to understand what our comprehensive plan is for the airport. The visioning one would be a tool to use to find out. Where businesses could come in and interject and and give us the help that we need and the guidances as to who. Who would be the users of this? Right now, we've got the the private pilots, but. It it won't sustain itself under the current fashion that it is. So by getting some of these other entities in there will help us build that out. And I. I don't know if that helps a little bit, but. This subcommittee has been a huge deal because we we just owned a runway. And it was, it is where it is today because of the people that were vested in it. And now we need to. We need to decide what we want to do going forward with it and how that looks. It it's not gonna go to a six thousand foot runway, it's not gonna go to a five thousand foot runway. Right now, we are talking about making, you know, putting it into the CIP into the budget to understand some of those things. So there's just. There's a few more working groups that we need to get through so that we can help. Get that put together to bring it back so that we can all have that conversation and and. Put that comprehensive plan together so that we can all share the same vision with it. I think we're all getting. Bits and pieces out of what the airport looks like. And so there's been a lot of work behind the scenes and. I know everybody appreciates that. And I think, Ryan, you were spot on by just simply saying it's just. Helping us with the tools that we need to get to where we need. Eventually. We'll have to decide as the city as to where this falls and what department and. You know, the way they operate, I mean, I mean, I'm just, I'm very impressed with some of these airports. I mean, the city doesn't do anything with it. It's all run by an FBO. It it's owned by the city, but it's run and and they pay to do it. So it's kind of interesting how it all works, but there's a lot of moving components to it and understanding how that all works. Colette?
So I think, so I hear you. I think that I think there's some. I there could be some confusion between the airport subcommittee and the visiting committee, right? And making sense about sort of those two entities and their roles. It also makes me think a little bit about. The Equity Task Force, right? And sort of how we got a group of folks together to bring forward recommendations to the council to sort of move forward on. And when we decided to do that work, we also incorporated an expert in that space to help sort of guide that task force in the work that we did. And what I'm not seeing here is sort of more of a. An expert when we think about visioning for an airport, right? It doesn't mean that these folks on here don't bring. A perspective that I think is really important to that work. But it feels like, and I might be missing the mark, I feel like I need to think about this a little bit more. But it seems like there's sort of that that piece that is missing a little bit for me when I think about. What we're looking, but just based on a little bit you've shared, what we're looking to come out of this particular subcommittee for us. So.
Ryan has something.
I think Councilman Harper was gonna go, so I'll defer to rank here.
Oh. Colette, I I, you know, that I think you just articulated sort of a missing link that's been bothering me and I haven't been able to put a label on it. But maybe that is. Having that consulting resource to guide us through a structured visioning. Sequence would be really useful. And so I appreciate what that sentiment.
So you have something to add, Ryan?
I I did. The. And to elaborate on that last bullet, the staff and consultants would support the group. We've been working with HDR and Anderson Bogart as part of the 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 report that was received and filed earlier. HDR did that. We did had Anderson Bogart do a peer review of it. Those are two consultants that the city has used in the past to work through the ALP. Jerry Searle, so. As part of the support of the group, having those entities. Whether it's Jerry Searle or Jane Costa, amazing, or would help. Help facilitate and and lead that that group as well.
So the this group would. Eventually end up with recommendations to the city council?
Correct. And and part of part of the. The the FBO lease that was recently amended and restated, I think it was back in April. One of the key components of that document was the provision of. It it provided the city a year timeframe within which to look at the operations of the airport. And so I should have mentioned that when I started this conversation. That this is, this is part of that work over the next year to evaluate and bring forward the recommendations back to the council. On things like ALP operations, things that. The council will need in order to make the informed decision about the long term. Future of the airport.
The council would appoint the committee?
Correct.
And the meetings would be agendized? I mean, they're they're subject to open meetings?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just want to make sure that that's clear. Anyone else? So what what are you looking for?
Is there support? Is there feedback? I mean, Colette, you'd talked about adding a resident on there. We can certainly do that. Is there any, I mean, does, is there anything that causes concern? I mean, other than the clarity of the different roles and in defining the. And making sure everybody's aware of, you got the Marion Municipal, the Marion Municipal Airport Committee, which is established by code, which helps to provide the.
To me, that's the group that you have to be really clear with as to, you know, here's your role, here's, we're not, we're not overlapping your role with roles. You know, I don't, I wouldn't want them to feel. Well, sidelined somehow, you know, that it's clear that this is a completely different mission of this group and. And it's. A defined thing that's that's gonna end and, you know.
It's it's a defined thing, this this group would work on. Whatever they brought forward would would funnel through and follow the 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 course, you know, we have a. Go through the the MAC to the council, much like the receiving and filing the report that's earlier on the agenda would would be doing. But this was just as as we talked with the airport subcommittee, making sure we had a good cross representation of business community. And other key stakeholders that would be able to provide some insight and an objective view of the operations in the airport.
With communication, I think it'll be good. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think the people on this, I'm not sure there's a big role for the subcommittee, airport subcommittee. As this is going on, because again. You got two city council members on this as well, but this group really has to look at all of this airport from from two lenses. One is. Well, first of all, the major comment to make is this is the only hybrid airport in the entire state. The only one that the city, a city does not own. It's the only hybrid airport like this and and it's just not working well. So. This group really needs to bring two lenses together. One is how should this airport function in the future? Should should the city? Invest more money into this airport? And if so, what should it look like? What should an operating budget look like? How's it gonna be funded, as Randy was talking about? And then what is the future investment gonna be needed by the city? So there's a number of key areas to be looking at and and as well, what is the future role of of the airport committee as well? So. And what is that ALP gonna look like? So there's a lot of major aspects. And I think that's why you need a diverse role, but I absolutely do like your comment. Colette, about having somebody kind of. Coordinate this and shepherd this through, because you got a diverse group here. We're gonna have city staff on it as well. But I think from that, as I think about that as as well, and the comments made, I think that would be. Add some benefit to this whole group going forward. And it does, it does have some time sensitivity. As as Ryan just talked about, so this has got to get done a little sooner than later, just to make sure. I think we're complying with the agreement that is out there. That's already put in place.
So Colette and then Randy.
I think just hopefully my last comment is, I've heard a few, a few different things. I think it'll be really important for us to clearly articulate what the objectives are. With this particular subcommittee. So I really have heard a few different things. So in order for us to get after the work and do the work in a timely manner, I think and. Have folks, right, support the work, we need to figure out exactly what is our expected outcome of this. So that will be. In my mind, important for us to to know before we move forward with. With a vision, whatever a visioning committee is, so.
I just, I had seen a previous list that was similar to this and I, my recommendation was not to be too specific on the individuals that were on there, but just merely get the support of a group. My recommendation would be seven people to keep the votes simple. And one of them did already have a resident in there. So I think we have a moving document here that. I think we're all on the same page with it. If we could just keep it a little. Flexible and and I totally support the resident. There was a resident that was on this previously. So I I think we're just looking for. In my opinion, I think we're just looking to. Put a group together because we we do have a timeline that's moving. If we don't, we're just kicking the can down the road and that's what we've done for the last six or seven years. So. It's to the point where we have got to do something and make a decision and and move forward with it. I hate to be so blunt with that, but. In all my years up here, we've been talking about this same thing over and over and over. So we got to start moving with it and. Because the ground, you know, everything's moving in around it out there and we're kind of landlocked with what's going on out there. So. That was just a couple, a couple of details there to add.
Okay, so is there anyone who strongly objects to this, their group like this? Is that what you're looking for?
It is. And what we will do is we will work on providing some specificity as requested by Colette. And then what we will do is we'll have a follow up agenda item or agenda items as it relates to this particular topic.
Thank you. Anything else on this topic? Okay, on to number two, detention basins. Steve again tonight.
After those last two topics, that's a tough act to follow.
Oh, yeah, both. Oh, yeah, both.
So detention base. Again, my name's Steve Cooper, I'm the stormwater coordinator. Several months back, I was asked to take a look at our policies and procedures and standards for detention basins. The strategic plan had a an item on it that said that Marion wants to expand the use of wet detention basins. So we needed to look at what our current standards are, what our current policies are. And ask our comparable communities what it is that they do with detention basins, wet or dry. So. With that, I've got a brief, hopefully brief presentation. Generally, there are three types of detention basins. There's dry that has only water quantity only. There's dry extended, which is water quantity and quality and wet that has both water quantity and quality. In Marion, those those are highlighted right there. Future developments, all new developments will have, we we stick to just the dry extended and the wet basins. For both water quantity and quality. Next slide. These are just some basics about detention basins. Dry detention, this is water quantity only. This is. That gray or the the brown area in the middle, water during low flow times will just kind of trickle through there and like nothing's happening at all. That basin will only fill up when we have huge amounts of rain that'll turn into a little pond and then eventually come out. The next slide has a picture of one of ours. This is down on South Twenty Sixth Street and Grand Avenue. That's a detention basin where if you look at that flume that's through there during low flow times, the water just flows through, doesn't get, there's nothing that that treats that water or stops it. But when we get large amounts of rain, that fills up and then trickles out. Next slide, please. The extended water detention basin is kind of the same, but instead of having just a little covert at the bottom where it trickles out. The water just stops and it can absorb back into the ground. And then during the the high. Rain events, it'll build up and become a pond. There's a control structure there that'll over top. And then the next slide has a picture of the, this is the basin that's up on Bellboy Drive and Echo Hill Road. You can kind of see where the outlet, the water just comes into the basin. It doesn't actually flow through there, absorbs into the ground. So that controls the water quality. And will only over top when we get those big rains. The next slide. This is a wet basin, this is the kind of the features of that. It's a, it's a, it's a pond. Basically what it is. And the next slide shows the, this is Glen Rock Farms. This is one of the. Ponds that we recently agreed to take over maintenance of, even though we don't typically do wet ponds, we'll talk about that a little bit later. Because this was accepting water from a larger regional area, we decided, yeah, even though this is gonna be a wet pond, we'll take over maintenance of it when the Glen Rock Farm development is complete. Next slide, please. So our current standards, we have adopted the Iowa State Urban Design and Specifications or SUDAS. That is what all of our. Construction, design and construction standards are. We have our current ordinance, which is chapter one fifty six that talks about how we put that together and it references the SUDAS specifications. Next slide, please. We also have our a unique policy for detention basins. It's got four parts to it. The part, part one is just kind of the general conditions of it. It's supposed to be designed by the developer to certain standards and we have to have access to it. Can't be hard surface. The part one is just general. General conditions. Part two is talks about the dry basins, how they're going to be designed, if they're gonna be ultimately publicly maintained, they have to be on outlots and. Or if they're gonna be privately maintained, they have to be on private property. Who's gonna maintain them if it's private, that what they're gonna do and how they're gonna maintain it during construction, if the city's gonna take over maintenance of it after the construction. So part two talks about that. Part three is about wet basins. Bottom line here, wet basins will not be accepted as public basins. That's all I really says. And then part four is the city retains the right to change our mind and do whatever we want. If we don't, if if we want to change something, we will, kind of like with the Glen Rock Farms. We don't take over wet basins, but for this one, we'll make an exception. So that's our current policy for detention basins. The next slide is the map that we have. We could talk about this for hours. There's all kinds of scenarios and setups and different situations for how our our post-construction stormwater best management practices are. We've got about fifty basins that are public. Most of them are maintained by either parks or public services. We've got, I can't see, I can't remember what the number is, maybe like twenty three or almost thirty that are. They will be public basins when the development is done and everything is done, we will take over maintenance of those. There are some basins that will, that could be public basins, but the developer is kind of in default, so it's just kind of hanging out there in limbo. And there's, I think, almost two hundred that are privately maintained post-construction best manager practices. So this is our map. We'll probably come back to that and talk about it later. Here's the costs, parks put to, parks put together, the breakdown of what they pay every year for mowing their ponds and their detention basins that they have on their part, their property. Public Services has figured out that they, that we spend about two thousand dollars per acre annually to maintain dry detention basins. And almost and more than three times that much, sixty five hundred dollars per acre annually for wet basins. So wet basins are significantly more costly to maintain. Next slide, our comparable cities. I contacted, reached out, contacted some of my counterparts in other cities to find out. Do you have a specific wet detention basin policy above and beyond whatever the standards are, whether it be SUDAS or the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual? Do you have a specific policy like what we have for detention basins? No, none of them do. Do, does the city maintain any of your detention basins? Generally, most of them said, no, we don't. There are some that that do the larger regional basins that serve larger areas. Yes, they will mow and maintain those. But most of them generally don't maintain their own public basins like we do. And maintenance agreements, that's something that we haven't talked about. Like in North Liberty and in Johnston, any new development that comes in, there's a whole development agreement that says, here's what's gonna happen. And you're gonna take care of these detention basins. And we have a maintenance agreement that you have to sign that will say you're gonna maintain these basins to a certain level. So all of these are comparable cities. Do you have a maintenance agreement that goes along with your new developments? Most of them say yes, there's a few that say no, we do not have a maintenance agreement for privately maintained bases. So that's how we compare to our comparable cities. That's just kind of a quick overview of all of this. Questions, discussion?
Okay. Yeah, this was really informative and I guess I just want to benchmark one thing I thought I heard you say. Our policy position is is that we would not have wet basins normally.
Our current policy is that we do not. Our current policy is that we do not accept maintenance of wet basins. Unless we kinda make us, there are now four or will be four wet basins that we ultimately will, maybe it's five, that we will maintain. Which basically is just kinda mow and clean because of certain circumstances.
Okay, so I just, a- and I don't wanna get into this particular conversation i- in depth, but. I'm bridging back to some considerations north of the airport where there was um, I think, an intention to have wet basins in that. As part of that development area. That's, is that Rookwood? Yeah, a- anyway, I just, I just wanna footnote the fact that there are some, I think, some aviation-specific concerns. We need to be sensitive to in that area uh just because of flight operations. So we can address that and cover off on it at a later date, but I just. Uh, and so this topic connects with, back with that and it intersects with airport operational considerations.
Got some discussions with that. And, and I believe the reason why we had this initiative on the, the strategic plan for. Uh, expand the use of wet basins was because it would incre- in- in- increase the amount of uh recreation that we have in our city as well as increase. Property values because people wanna, they'll spend more money on, for a parcel that's on waterfront property, basically. So. Uh, there, there's reasons for this, but I, uh, we're looking for guidance from council. What, what do we, do, do we keep our current rules? Do we wanna keep looking at this and see what else we could possibly do with detention basins? Do we wanna change the rules? Do we wanna keep things the way it is?
And to give you a little more context, if we back up a little bit. So in the strap planning, I just said make more wet tension basins. It was very. Very simple. And so when we started having that conversation with Mr. Waller, it was, well, why are we even taking them? And if you recall, we had a lot of those conversations when Renee was still on councils, why are we taking this obligation of this detention basin? And so that's kinda why we looked at it. Okay, we need to look at this, bigger pictures, take a step back and look at it. So there's really a couple of questions is. Not only do we, in the new strap plan, we're, we're kinda mute on this, but obviously a wet basin over a dry basin does have benefits. There's fishing, suspended solids. If you think of um anything that has like fruit juice or something in it, as it sits there, it settles out. So your pond does the same thing. So you're cleaning that water by having it sit there. Yes, it costs more, but is that something that we want to do as the city? But then also whether they're wet or dry, do we wanna maintain them being parks and public service? Um, or do we want the developer or an HOA set up to maintain it? And then we set up an agreement with legal that says. If you don't maintain it per the standards, we're gonna go in there and do it and then we're gonna assess you. And there's all kinds of different development agreements that Steve's found in there.
I like that option.
So there's a lot of directions that we can go with this. So we didn't wanna start going down a path. And then council and want us to go a completely different direction. So right now, what we're kinda looking for is. If there's a, a direction that you're kinda leaning, we can start doing more research and give you more details going down that direction similar to the UTV. And we can start going down that path and research, find some ordinances. Um, but we don't wanna spend time doing something if that's not where the council wants to go.
And, and just to add a little bit more color to this, and sorry to keep bouncing around the room here, but um, when I was still onboarding. And getting an overview of the different departments and some of the things we're working on and the strap plan and this conversation came up. Part of the reason why I was asking the question is just having worked in other communities where this was a topic, it becomes, it becomes a. Potential liability issue. There are expenses and staff time that's dedicated towards it. And when we think about our community's growth and the need for staff and how things are being done, what is the most effective use of the staff time? So um, I appreciate the, the conversation that we had as a staff and that's why Steve went through this due diligence to. Kinda like to understand, let's look at what our comparables are doing. So we have, we can then come back. We did have the, the conversation with the, the council subcommittee on this. On this topic um before bringing it to here. And, and the, the thing is, we just wanna make sure it's, it's um touch base with home base here. Are we, are we on the right path? Here's the data. Let's make sure we're, we're continuing down a path that's council's um support above. And uh, we're meeting wh- what your expectations are.
Okay, so I'm gonna go and then Randy and then Steve. Um, my personal view is that they are attractive. I think they do add value. I think that the wet basins do add value. I think uh from an aesthetic standpoint, they do, you know, add something to the city and to. Quality of life and um, you know, enhancing curb appeal of a neighborhood. Um, I'm not sure that the city wants to get in the business of operating them. Um, so I mean, I, I personally would like to see what the options are in terms of tightening up the guidelines and the restrictions on, on the private. Maintenance and management of them. I know there was that one over off of. Oh, off of Albert Net a couple of years ago that was completely gotten over, overgrown with vegetation around it. So people were worried about kids like, you know, falling in it. Nobody would even know. Um, so rules around that in terms of management and maintaining them. If a, if a developer is going to put them in, how they would be owned and, and managed and maintained. But. Um, yeah, I'm not sure that the city wants to, from my perspective. Um, dedicate the resources to managing dozens and dozens of wet basins. Oh, go ahead, Randy.
Um, I'm just gonna echo that one because I like it as well too, but if it becomes more of a developer's um part of the development, you know, they can put aerators in them. And, you know, make them look attractive and build retain, you know, put limestone around them and, and it becomes more of an architectural feature too, obviously subdivision. Um, I wanna go one step further with it too and, and have a little bit of context with these basins because. From the insurance side, we are running into a, just a huge issue with water sewer backups. Um, and what I'm referring to there is water some pumps. Um, a lot of these homes now because of the way our aquifer is and. And, and I live over by Linegar Park, my pump kicks in every fifteen minutes and it wasn't that way when I moved in there eight years ago. So with these retention basins that we're putting in, we're also holding water back and I understand the concept of it. But when, just for clarification, when a developer goes out, especially when we're talking about that territory out there north of the airport, developer goes out, cuts into a field. And starts developing, digging a holes, because that's what we do here in Iowa. We, we, we wanna build a house. For some reason, we gotta dig a hole. Um, we don't build enough slab homes anymore because it's not part of our deal. But so they go in there and they cut these field tiles. Those field tiles are designed to run the overflow of water from the field into a lower lying area. And that's part of the way the agriculture is. That's, this is just the conversation we just had a few minutes ago. So the developer takes it, comes in, cuts a hole or digs a hole. We've cut into field tile. Now all of a sudden, the homeowner has to manage that water. That's coming in through the foundation of the home, through the field tile around their homes. Well, if you escalate that downhill a little bit, the ones that are at the bottom of the hill. That are gonna be by this retention pond or whatever we're doing, the, the moisture in the ground just keeps backing up and backing up and backing up. So my question is, and the thing, the challenge I would ask us to be looking at is all of those examples that you gave us, some of them are natural. Some of them are lined, uh, where they reactively, or they actively go in and put a liner in those retention ponds. Um, so that it doesn't impact the, the soil content of moisture on the outside of those retention ponds. Is that something we even take into consideration, other than just topographical going in and saying this is the low spot? We'll make that three acres and, and call that the retention. Are we doing anything to contain the water? Because what we're doing is trying to water. We're trying to control the wa- the watershed from moving something from agriculture to commercial or industrial or, excuse me. Residential to city, we're paving the roads and, and all of that water needs to go somewhere. So that's what we're doing, but. We don't, I don't think we're looking at the holistic picture of what's happening beyond that. And maybe we are and I'm just not seeing it, but. I've got brand new, there are brand new homes that have had water backups through their sun pumps already, just because of the amount of water. That's coming in around the, the tile around these, these homes. And so that's what concerns me a little bit about. Listening to these types of different retention ponds that we're doing because in my area there and, and FEMA is trying to raise the flood zones. You know, already, I didn't realize I was sitting on a flood plane like I am and that really disturbs me a little bit as far as. I'm across the street of my house is flood zone. Um, so as we're cutting in these areas and we're requiring them to put these retention ponds in, I, I hope we're looking at that. Uh, through a lot of different lenses. Um, and I'm sorry, that was a really broad brush there, but. So taking them back to the developer and turning them into lined retention ponds with aerators and making them part of their architectural development. I think is, is a huge favor is, is where I would be leaning towards on that. But I love the fact that we're having the conversations with them.
So to answer your question quickly, most of them are not lined. Um, so if you wanna a pond that actually holds water, sometimes you'll put petunia or something in it, but it's not like a landfill where you're actually putting a liner in there to keep that water trapped in there. Um, we're actually wanting that water to get back into the aquifer and replenish it because they're going down.
And when it takes the path of least resistance, guess where it's showing up? In the basements.
Actually, the Iowa Drainage Law Annual, you're talking about Field Tile, the Iowa Drainage Law Manual. I then, or uh, addresses that specifically that.
Great.
Upstream process, property owners have the right to discharge their water to downstream property owners or higher property. Discharge to lower property and that means surface, underground, tiled agriculture. So whenever you've got a developer that cuts into a farm tile. The downstream property owners have to accept that water.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
And where it goes, like you said, in a basement.
Steve?
Yeah, so Steve, if you're looking at two neighborhoods, assuming they're the same size and shape and all of that. If you do a dry basin versus a wet basin, is that dry basin going to take more land? No, so no more land?
Doesn't, it doesn't have to.
Doesn't have to.
The SUDAS specifications and the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual kind of identifies that. If you wanna have a pond, there's different ways you can have a pond. One can just be, the water is there, it's the same capacity as a dry basin. Or if you wanna make that pond a little bit different, like you've got. Some holes in it or some benches on it and, and has, have some fish habitats. Um, there's no rule that says that this pond has to be the same as that. Just depends on what you want that to function as.
So I, I agree with the mayor's initial comments about that it, it, a wet basin can add some value aesthetically, look good. In the beginning, when it's all done and the neighborhood is brand new, the concern is twenty, thirty years later, if it's not maintained. Then that's gonna look a lot worse than a dry basin. And potentially, and potentially add more liability to the city. So all of a sudden, if that neighborhood or HOA, whoever it is, is not maintaining it. You know, everybody's gonna be looking to the city and say, well, you allow this. Uh, so you, you, they start looking at the city for some liability or responsibilities. So from the whole high level piece here, I'd agree, whatever we can do to tighten it up, pass on that, make that the responsibility. Of the developer, the HOA, if we have to put in maintenance agreements. Um, geez, if we can even have some reserve funds set aside for future liability like we do in some areas, but. A bond or something, you know, on a long-term bond uh of a certain amount, just to say, hey, that's out there, then, you know, that's at least some commitment. So I don't think it should be the city's responsibility. Uh, if it's a neighborhood and it's put in, in this neighborhood, they should be the ones putting the pressure on. Uh, the HOA or the owners of the developer to maintain it on a long-term basis. But I also know from a practical standpoint. In the first ten years, I believe that'll happen. Twenty, thirty years, I'm not as convinced that's gonna happen. So I think that's where we're going. So. I don't want the city to take on that liability. I think it should be the, the HOAs or the developers or whoever that is. So, but I do like wet basins, but I also see. Uh, if a wet basin or dry basin doesn't take up any more land, there's certainly options for that too. And I'm, I'm assuming that's cheaper for the developer to put in anyway.
Uh, it's, th- those are all things that are gonna be decided when new developments are proposed. Because there, there's not a, there's not a, a boilerplate blanket statement that we can say every development's gonna do this. Kinda depends on topography, drainage features. How, how shallow the, the bedrock is in the development.
The only bad thing about the wet basis is the geese.
The Iowa Stormwater Management Manual for wet basins actually addresses how you can have a wet basin with, uh, with geese control, goose control. If you do it right.
Sounds like, sounds like that better be published out so we can all read it.
Just don't put a walking path around the pond and be a much easier cleaner.
It's, yeah, it's an obstacle course.
Yeah, so um, a question and then a comment relative to, I guess, guidance. The type of basin, whether it be dry, wet or intermediate, I forget the phrase. Is that, is the, is the selection kinda driven by the topography and the drainage pattern in a given. Development's specific geographic location?
It, uh, lots of different conditions. It is the developer's choice. Uh, we have a developer in town here that likes to do ponds because he knows that his property values would be better. Uh, increase and uh, he keeps them private. He knows that, uh, that, that's just gonna be a pond there. Um, other developers say, no, I don't wanna do it that way. So it's kind of a choice in some areas. And in other areas, it's, well, what is best for this particular topography geographic area? So. The answer to that question is it depends on a few different factors.
It's variable answer.
But as, but as part of the plat approval, right? I mean, is that when you would have them sign an agreement or something that? In the development agreement with the plat approval, where there's tighter controls on maintenance over the long term or maybe even a bond. I mean, I, you know, I think, who knows? I think Tom had something.
Yeah, I, I had it. I, that, he answered my question. I just had it. My comment on this is, I would, I would favor. The structure that's been commented on by the mayor and Steve and, and Randy, um, where if it's, certainly if it's a wet basin. We seek a, a maintenance agreement with the developer uh that has some teeth in it. And recognizing that if they don't maintain it, that we go back in and, and do the proper maintenance and then they get, they get built. Um, I, I don't know how that all works for, for the other basin types, but specific to wet basin, I think. If that's what they wanna do, then they need to provision it so that they can maintain it.
Tom, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I don't wanna um jump in here and, and switch gears at all, but I, I think it's important if the strategic plan was to encourage wet basins. Um, to understand the dry basins are generally gonna be cheaper. And right now, as a policy, there's, we accept them and maintain them. So I, I think it, we probably need to look at it holistically and understand if we, if we wanna accept. Basins in general, because if you're the developer and you're looking for a way to manage the stormwater. Um, the easiest path of least resistance, under current policy, you would plat out the basin. Put it in a mobile condition, we accept it and then Brian and Parks maintain it for, in perpetuity. Um, which um is just a que- so, so if you're trying to encourage them and you're requiring all these things. There's probably gonna be less uh desire to do them. That being said, I would question whether. The city should accept basins in, in general. And I think that may have been what Ryan was referring to is just in general, the fact that we, we accept them. As an example, uh, I lived in Hiawatha, I lived in a Skogman Development. Uh, the basin, while being dry, was, was detaining water. Was wet. People complained about it. It started to overgrow. Our homeowners association was required to go in. Maintain it. We had to put concrete in. It was charged all the, all the community members. So I mean, there is a way and. The mayor's right, was through the HOA, that's how that's maintained. But it was a requirement that we had to perform. And then someone, you know, in Steve's position would come out and say. Hey, it's not done yet. Correctly, you gotta do it this way and this way and this way. So I think that's a, it's a conversation that I think we also need to in. Include the dry basins in to under, if we're trying to encourage wet basins.
Those, those are good points. Um, I, I just think like. When, when people buy a lot on a pond, I think they expect to have to pay to maintain it. It's expected to be in some sort of an agreement that they're part of.
Well, we, we currently don't have an agreement.
Right, but I'm just saying that, you know, so I mean, I just, I'm just thinking of that as Tom was talking like, you know, I think that you would expect that though. Not, I'm not, not in agreement with the city, but that there would be, that it's privately maintained. I don't know that they expect that the city's gonna be maintaining that pond. That's my point.
I received a call from a resident in one of our developments that has a pond, a privately maintained pond. And she was wondering if the city has any standards that they're supposed to maintain the ponds too, because she didn't like the level of maintenance for the ponds. She said that she, their, their particular development, they pay two hundred and fifty dollars per house. She said that she their their particular development, they pay two hundred fifty dollars per house to the homeowners association. For fees that are supposed to do lots of things, including maintain the ponds, but instead of maintaining the ponds that go that they're two hundred fifty dollars each goes to potlucks.
Yeah.
And we have, we don't have any recourse to do anything about that.
It may be a good thing to set the standards and to have the. The 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 development agreements and all of that, because it's just, everybody knows what to expect. And.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Not repeating, but just saying, um, I'm. Supporting all of this conversation on the wet basins. I think this is great and especially as um. We reach higher and we look what our community wants to be. We're having a lot of discussions, I feel like right now on. What we want this community to look like, how we want to elevate our expectations of developers. Um, we have a lot of people coming here wanting to do business, which is great. We welcome them, however. You know, I mean, it's it's okay for us to say, this is what we're going to expect, this is what I want. And so I I applaud you for moving forward with that and let us know next step.
So as the engineer that has to review all these with the engineer and the developer and everything like that, I can tell you. The decision between wet and dry has nothing to do with engineering size or anything like that. If we are going to maintain dry basins, the vast majority of them are just going to go dry. Because they don't want to do an HOA. That's just a fact. That's why they're dry now. If the city would accept wet basins, ninety percent of them will be wet. The reason they're not is because we don't accept those.
Okay.
That's the whole reason why they're there. So if you want to promote wet basins. You either have to make them so that we don't maintain any of them or do something else like that. Otherwise, it'll stay status quo, which is okay unless it's not okay, if that makes sense, you know. Uh, but that's that's why.
That's the perspective we need to hear.
Yeah, I mean, that's the whole reason. It's there's no real fancy engineering thing or anything like that. It's like, oh, they'll take a wet one, so we're just going to do it like that. That's really how it goes. So.
And it. As a growing community. Limited resources, limited staff, we got a lot more, we got a. Beautiful uptown that we got to maintain, park staff is going to be spending more time up there. Uh, public services departments can be spending more time up there. I mean, as we continue to grow, the staffing that we have is limited and. While it may not appear to be much, but as we continue to grow, this becomes more and more and more. And then. You know, one of the things that we talked about as staff is, you know, with the dry basins, when we maintain it. We're doing it to the to the specs that our our weed commissioner and our staff are saying, yes, this meets code. This is acceptable, but then we get calls from folks saying, well, it's not done to our standards. And we understand that and we want to manage the expectations. We want to reach higher. We want to be customer service oriented. But when we're trying to manage all this too, so it just, it helps us with anything. If we get clarity. Um, then we can better market it and and educate our staff, our community and how and and. Transfer the risk uh, and the responsibilities so that we can then know the role and then when we, if we. If if the council's decision is no, we we do want that taken on. Okay, well, then as we start looking at other projects and things we have to maintain. At least we've had that conversation with you all as we go through the budget process and talk about the needs for staffing and things like that.
I I I personally see no reason why the city. Couldn't turn over all the bases to the neighborhoods because. I mean, any common area in a in a development should be managed by. The neighborhood. I mean, you know, that's just, I mean, if they had a whatever they have, that's that's common area, they would be managing it. Why? Why shouldn't the? Um, basin be the same thing? Um.
We are actually required through our MS four permit with the DNR Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. Thomas and I are required to go around every year and inspect post-construction. Best management practices for stormwater. Right now, all we have to do is inspect them. The the DNR doesn't require us to do anything about it. If we find something that's wrong, we just have to inspect them. Having a maintenance agreement with detention basins, wet or dry. If there's an HOA or someone that's supposed to be doing something with a with a detention basin. That they're not doing right now, we can't do anything about it, other than just kind of say, hey, you should fix this. A maintenance agreement would say, here's what you agreed to do and you're not doing.
Yeah. Okay, so do you need anything else from us on this tonight, or is this just a discussion for?
Right, just guidance, the guidance that you've provided tonight, and we will keep moving forward and reporting back.
You have the guidance you need, you think?
I believe I do.
Guys?
I think that was, that was a great discussion, very clear, and I think we'll come back and make sure that we kept captured everything properly and. Uh, so you'll see it again as we continue on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work. Okay. We have now uh, extended over Rachel's estimated time by an hour. Okay. You're usually pretty good, Rachel.
You're still very good, Rachel.
All right, next budget discussion. Oh. I did, I didn't take care of number three, did it? Environmental scan?
That's environmental as it pertains to the budget.
Oh, okay. Well, I I was wondering why. Why Steve said he's got two and three. I thought you said you have three too, and I thought, huh? Okay. Go ahead.
So this is the next in our series of budget presentations, kind of looking back to where we've been. Um, we looked at the community survey. We talked about the strategic plan. We talked about financial policies and. Just last meeting, August second, we talked about the preliminary annual report. So we've kind of got the direction as to where we're going from the strategic plan. We've we've looked at where we've been. Um, the intent of this environmental scan is to try and piece it all together. So this includes um. Stuff that came out of the strategic plan. It it includes some of the environmental scan that um, our consultant had done. It includes stuff that came out of the community survey. Um, the executive leadership team kind of met and also talked about pulling in some. Things that are coming from our perspective. And so this just is a nice summary, wrapping it up. It's a modified version of a SWOT analysis. Um, on the strength side, looking at our local assets. Quality of life is kind of that all encompassing includes, you know, your parks and rec amenities, uptown artway, the library, the different events that we do. The fact that we have the safe city, you know, these are the things that draw people to the city of Marion. As well as our community brand. Team Marion, of course, our employees and our city council and our good looking police chief are obviously um. Assets. That we can't miss. Um, our double A one bond rating and our healthy general fund reserve. And then our local partnerships, Medco Chamber, and even our our regional partners, Cedar Rapids, Hiawatha, and. I'm not even going to try and list all of them because there are a lot of partners. And then also businesses, because it seems every day, as the mayor often says, there's another ribbon cutting, and that is definitely a huge asset to our organization. So areas for improvement or obstacles to growth of the city. Obviously, there's infrastructure restraints with sewers and roads. Um, we've had the sanitary sewer capacity study. We've identified growth areas. These are all directions that we've already looked at and are continuing to make progress on. Um, the multimodal transit options, public parking study, these are things that came out of our community survey. We've talked about doing public parking study. We've been looking at bus service. So these are all things that we are aware of and working towards. Um, sustainable facility and asset maintenance. Um, we've talked about how. We haven't been funding the equipment reserve fund at the level that we need to. Um, that we need to balance um, how much we pay as you go versus how much we take on bonding. So um, that's another thing that we're going to need to continue to improve on. Our existing debt level and capacity, when we were talking about our financial policies, we were talking about. How we need to look at revenue bonds and other areas of debt, not just using general obligation debt to pay for everything. Um, our compensation structure. We do have an RFQ out for compensation study, so that is something we're also working on, but. Inevitably, the structure is outdated. It hasn't been updated in a number of years. And then um, risk management, again, another area that we've identified for improvement. We've been working with Boost Log and we're going to continue working to mitigate. The increasing costs for claims and premiums in that area. Um, flipping to the external like opportunities, favorable external conditions. I think we're all aware that there is a lot of federal dollars floating out there and grants that can be applied for. A good example of one we recently received was the Destination Iowa Grant, so continuing to take advantage of those opportunities out there. Utilizing technology and partnerships. Um, they're constantly developing new technologies to automate things and to make. Create more efficiencies, so we're going to continue to look at those investments. Um, service delivery options, new ways, look at new ways of delivering services. Um, this was talked about in the realms of the fire department, but I think it's relevant in all areas. Um, the mobile library is a good example of one we're already moving forward with. Affordable and diverse housing options. Um, even in reference tonight, Tom talked about how there is a need for more affordable housing. People are looking at those multi-residential options. And then diversity, equity, inclusion. Um, just continuing with the initiatives that we have, including training, expanding our knowledge and even recruitment strategies in those types of areas. I'm going to pause for a moment and see if anyone. Has any input before I move on to the challenges. So some of the challenges moving into this next budget cycle, the state legislative changes to revenue. We've talked about this one a lot. You know, there is the rollback effect and the phase out of the backfill. And the multi-residential rollback that continues to decrease revenue in those areas. Um, in this last legislative section, they also started talking about local option sales tax. Do not know, um, there's good potential for them to bring that up in session next year. So always keeping those in mind. State limitations on home rule. I mean, we all know about fireworks. There's been other topics that have come up, so. There are those. Um, supply chain and inflation. This is kind of a big one as we're looking. Forward to the next few years, we're finding the lead time needed to purchase things. Um, needs to be a lot more planned out. I mean, one topic that will be coming forward at some point is just. Fire apparatuses and how long it takes. For those items to come in, so we may have to. You know, essentially make the purchase a year in advance of when we would normally budget for it, just due to timing. Inflation, of course, is always increasing costs and how to balance that and the. Um, lack of additional revenue coming in and balancing that. Um, interest rates and housing costs, this is acknowledging the fact that as interest rates increase and housing costs increase. It becomes less attractive for developers and for homeowners to build and buy houses. So that's just acknowledging that that threat is out there. And then last, but certainly not least, the labor market, and this is probably one of the biggest challenges that. Not only the city of Marion, but a lot of organizations are facing right now. Recruitment and retention for the city of Marion, especially in the police department, has been and will continue to be a challenge. Um, some of the trends that we are recognizing in the market, aside from the obvious one, which which is compensation. Is the flexibility of where you work, but also when you work. Um, compressed work weeks. I do know the police department is looking at what a twelve hour shift might look like in their organization. Um, employer paid training and development has been increasing externally as. Um, employers are looking to develop their own staff, focus on mental health and well being. I think there's a lot of talk um, externally about. You know, when you bring a person to work, you're bringing the whole person, so there's a lot of engagement in that area. Um, so that was kind of just the overview of the environmental scan. Looking at just some of the changes that we're aware of coming into the budget, um, commercial backfill phase out, multi-residential rollback. The business property tax credit. Um, these are all items that we are currently working on the model with DA Davidson for the general fund. The business property tax, um, I don't know if everyone's aware of this one. It was signed by the mayor back in May. It was a bill. I don't know there's all the specific details on it, other than it sounds like it's basically an increase to the business property tax credit. The state did set aside an amount to pay for that bill. However, they have already acknowledged that it will not be enough to pay for it. The league has not provided any estimates or anything as to how much it will impact Marion's. We do not know yet. What that impact will be, but um, we do expect probably a decrease. Just the question is how much? Um, the E nine one one radio tower maintenance agreement that we didn't expect. Of course, we're acknowledging that and it again is included in the DA Davidson model that is in progress. Sanitary sewer agreement with Cedar Rapids. Um, we've been making traction on that. Agreement, so that one actually might be a positive in the positive direction right now. But again, we're building that model, same with solid waste fees. And then I failed to change. I was going to put capital improvement program under Destination Iowa, but that's actually a positive for the CIP because that was. Three million dollars. We were not originally anticipating the CIP. All of this, just to say, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes. Um. We're making progress on a lot of these items and we are. Gearing up right now with the capital improvement program. We are starting to enter the phase of actually building the budget. The departments right now are working on their asset replacement schedules and compiling their equipment requests. So on September sixth, the plan is to, um, as on the budget calendar, is to start tackling the CIP and bring a prioritization to city council. I feel like I talked really fast, so. I didn't give you any numbers tonight. I do want to point that out.
Do you want questions now?
Yep.
Questions, go ahead. Well, first off, Leanne, I I really want to um, thank you for pulling this. Environmental scan together, and in fact, the the first slide that you shared. This is sort of like the talking points. To address many of the concerns that come up in our conversations with our community, and in fact, I suppose this could be. Um, th- this could be, uh, you you know, changed into. Uh, something that goes into one of our periodic publications so that people can see the 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 total breadth and width. Of the strengths, the opportunities, the challenges and areas for improvement that we're managing against it really presents. The fabric of the city's management and and it tells a story, so. You know, a lot of people get single issue focused, but I think this would help them understand. Um, the the totality of the management objective that that all of you in all departments are are undertaking. So I just think this is a great communications piece. Thank you. It's informative certainly to me.
I agree. More big picture stuff, we can, we can do the the better, I think. Anyone else? Good work.
Thank you.
Okay. This brings us to the closed session.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation. As permitted under section twenty one point five one C. And regarding personnel matters as permitted under twenty one point five. One I of the Code of Iowa, and this will represent three separate matters.
Second.
Okay, so we moved in second to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty one point five one C. Regarding personnel matters as permitted under twenty one point five one I of the Code of Iowa. Um, may we have the council's statement, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed sessions and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, sections twenty one point five one C and twenty one point five one I.
Okay, discussion before we vote. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Asli?
Yes.
Ms. Mensah?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Okay, um, thank you, everybody, for joining us, and I just wanted to say thank you, uh. Just, I just feel like. We are all moving in 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 together. We're moving faster, and I feel like we're like. There's so there's great synergy and we're working in concert with each other, council and staff, and. Really thinking big picture, really make, you know, looking at. At the totality of everything that we're working on and and where we're headed as a city in a much, much uh, higher level. In a much better way than we than we have in my experience. I just want to say thank you and I appreciate. All the collaboration and the and the cooperation and then the great work that it's doing. So we're adjourned the closed session.